Aggressiveness tonight.
Oh, I got it. I got it. I thought I lost my cheat sheet. Okay. It is four thirty on April the second, and this is a meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And if Petticore can do it at this size, it's gotta be a piece of cake for you.
We know about the protocol.
That's right. We have rules. Okay. Tonight's agenda, we have two things. We had, we had a, a small little bit of business. And so for those of you that are out there, give you a chance to think for a minute. We're gonna reverse it and do the ditch hearing first and do that little bit of business at the end so that you folks don't have to suffer through a, a housekeeping board meeting.
Commissioner Rudell.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Hung.
Here.
Tonight is the final hearing on the Roth main ditch and lateral number one restoration, Columbia Township. A petition was received from Jennifer R. Smith and others in accordance with Ohio Vice Code sixty-one thirty-one point oh four one on February nineteenth to twenty-three from Lorraine County Stormwater Districts with all costs being borne by the district. Said petition is to clean and reconstruct the drainage system running from Mitchell Road, Columbia Township by excavating and shaping the ditch, remove obstructions such as sediment, trees, and vegetation, and altering damaged and undersized drains in order to restore adequate drainage and provide access with a new easement for county maintenance. This is original lot seventy-nine and eighty-two commencing in Mitchell Road about point three mile north of Osborne Road, thence running east, then northeast about point five mile to north line of said Columbia Township Lot seventy-nine, which is also south line of Stone Ridge Estates subdivision as recorded in volume ninety, page sixteen of the county plat records. April third to twenty-three, the prerecorded drone viewing was held and the first hearing was held on May twenty-third. May twenty-third, a hearing was held and the engineer's preliminary report, Resolution twenty-three three ninety-one ordered the engineer to prepare reports, plans, and schedules on proposed improvement to include the alternate route of existing ditch as reports on tile and basin and to be filed in September twenty-second of twenty-three. Resolution twenty-three six fifty-three on September nineteenth, engineer requests an extension of filing report until December nineteenth of twenty-three. The commissioners accepted and would report on this in January twenty twenty-four. Resolution twenty-four of eighty-two on February second to twenty-four accepted the engineer's report, scheduled this hearing today. Engineer investigated two additional drainage improvement alternates. The two alternates estimated cost an additional one million seven hundred fifty-three thousand twenty-five dollars for the tile and five million eight hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the basin. The original cost of the basin was estimated nine hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred. March eighth, engineer penned his report and scheduled assessments are based upon the estimate of the total cost of the base project at nine hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred. March eleventh, four certified letters were sent to the owners. Notice that the hearing was published in the Chronicle on March eighteenth and twenty-fifth.
Okay. Anybody who wishes or, or believes they may want to speak during the course of this hearing, please rise and have Greg swear you in.
Anybody wishing to speak, please raise your right hand and say yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to, are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Zwick, you get to go first.
I have about a ten-minute presentation.
All right. Can everyone hear me properly? Yes?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. Oops. Okay. So, good afternoon, commissioners, member of the audience. I am Peter Zwick. I represent the Office of the County Engineer at this hearing in the drainage improvement petition process. To refresh your memories regarding some of the drainage problems to be solved, here is the situation as of yesterday on Mitchell Road. This will be a short video, which should start here. Didn't start. No? Okay. Assistance? Okay.
Well, we just knocked off eight minutes.
No, it's actually a twenty-second video. But, but, wait a minute. It says right here. It says this video was made prior to the rain last night.
Do you have the flash drive I just gave you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. If you wanna give it to Victor, we can plug it in.
So, it's not the greatest twenty-second video in the world, but it shows a bunch of puddles as of yesterday. And I'm sure that after the last rain, some of the people in the audience will tell you what the situation was today. I received a phone call or two from residents, and it says I expected it's indefinite need of a public improvement starting at Mitchell Road, running northeast all the way to the subdivision. It's Glen Cove Circle subdivision. Actually, it's called Stump Rest subdivision. The street is Glen Cove. Yeah, just hit that if you could start that, please.
Thanks, Victor.
Yeah, so here I am.
On the west side of the, on Mitchell Road here in Columbia Station.
West side of the road.
Been about an inch of rain in the last forty-eight hours. Rain stopped earlier this morning. A little bit more predicted tonight. Plenty of standing water on both sides of the road. Now we're looking to the east, and this is actually along the route of the proposed improvement. And looking farther southeast toward the Roth Farm, more standing water.
Okay. Thanks for your patience. There's certainly more standing water there right now after the rains we had overnight. And I showed you that simply to refresh your memories. It's been about a year since the board first initiated this process with the drone video and the one previous hearing we had last summer. At that hearing, you ordered the engineer's office to proceed with the engineering process, and you specifically instructed us to investigate two other alternate proposals. Here's a diagram that's in the report right there. The blue, dark blue color is the whole project. It's the ditch that we proposed to clean. And the two alternates are the red triangular area, which would be a large detention basin, which was one of the alternates. And the other one is in lighter blue. Sorry, it's not quite as bold, but it, it's a storm sewer that would run across those three parcels, which actually front on Station Road, which is to the right on the map. Of course, north is up on the map. So those were the two alternates. Instead of cleaning the ditch in the conventional manner, there's this giant ditch there, by the way, today, to either ignore the ditch and install a new detention basin in red or to pipe it in the light blue color. And the short result from my investigation is the following. Here's the cost of the original proposal. You heard Teresa say nine hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Let's round that off to a million dollars. The next expensive, most, more expensive alternate is the tile. I'll call it a storm sewer because instead of using old clay tiles, we'll use modern plastic storm sewer pipe. Almost three times as much in cost. And the other alternate would be the stormwater management basin, much more expensive. It covers a lot more land. There'd be some land costs as well as a lot of excavation and tree clearing and so forth. So that's the, the main result that I wanted to report to you today. The tile alternate is the only one, rather the, uh, both of the alternates, in our opinion, so the tile and the basin, would be far too costly in the engineer's opinion. And you can see why we originally recommended what we recommended. It's definitely the most cost-effective way to solve the drainage problem. And I'll state it for the record, it's in the report, but we feel at the engineer's department that the only cost-effective project that we would recommend is not the alternates, but the original ditch at about a million dollars. And we would say that in our professional engineering opinion, the benefits of that project would exceed the cost, not so for the more expensive alternates. Therefore, what, from our point of view at the engineer's office, the, the only cost-effective option is the original dis- ditch restoration scope. And I'd like to explain a little bit, take a few minutes of your time today. The ditch today through those wooded parcels is, in fact, a major bottleneck. It's plagued drainage throughout the neighborhood for some years. And solving that, cleaning out the sediment, properly excavating and shaping the ditch, would allow the whole area, all the way to Mitchell Road, would allow it to drain properly and thus would be conducive to the public welfare. So that's our recommendation in our report dated December eighteenth. Specifically, I want to make it clear to you that our investigation confirms that the major bottleneck, or one of the major bottlenecks, consists of this unmaintained section of the ditch. It's through the woods, and it suffers from what I'm, will describe to you as standing or sluggish flowing water. The problem is, it measures about a quarter mile long through the woods, and the sediment there is up to two feet deep. And what you see in that picture is deceptive. And let me explain. This ditch cannot flow today unless the water builds up so much further upstream in Mitchell Road that it creates that fall that this ditch in the picture does not have. It's hard to see, but there's water sitting on top of one to two feet of sediment. One to two feet of sediment in this very flat part of Columbia Township will back up water easily a very, very long distance. So the original plan is to dig down, remove that, and get it to the correct depth so that it provides a downhill slope all the way to, I'm sorry, provides a downhill slope all the way to the adequate outlet. All right. And I wanted to discuss what we've been doing. We've met with two of the owners where this bottleneck is. And here's some more pictures. Quite frankly, despite our spirit of cooperation, I'll tell you that after meeting with these two owners, frankly, we expect no mutual agreement in regard to this ditch cleaning. The owners are just not in favor of any kind of a project, but I'll let them explain their case. I will remark that in two thousand nine, the records indicate that those owners, the same owners, or the same group of owners, had successfully cut short the previous project, which left us with a problem dating back into the two thousands. We actually have a piece of pipe sort of in the middle of this that's been on maintenance. The problem is, it doesn't have an outlet through the woods, and it's, it's underwater today. I think I've got a picture of it coming up here. But today, we're still burdened with the same bottleneck. It's only worsened over the years, obviously. Sediment builds up slowly but surely, and after fifteen years or more, there's plenty of more sediment to deal with. Unfortunately, the drainage cannot be restored without this particular important component of the project, including proper maintenance. And I'll, I'll leave you with this. Many owners don't maintain their, what today is a private ditch and private property. It's essentially private infrastructure. The, the raw tile is there underground, but that's long since failed. I will show you for your own edification. Look at these two pictures. Nearby, the county happens to maintain this ditch in the back of that subdivision. That's the Glen Cove Circle Street area there. At the bottom, that's what we're left with, with folks who either don't or cannot. And I realize not everybody's a drainage expert. I wouldn't expect them to know what elevation to clean it to or anything like that. But we have the engineered plan, and that is our recommendation. And I'll leave it there. Mr. Chairman, I'm available to answer questions from the board.
Just out of curiosity, what size was the tile in the tile estimate for three million?
Thirty-six inch diameter pipe.
Peter.
Yes, ma'am.
President?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, make it sound like a dumb question, Peter, when I'm looking at this report from you, the benefits of the tile alternate will not exceed its costs. And I got to the pricing. So we're basically looking at a million versus a million seven fifty. And, and I don't know where it just went.
So what, what's your question?
So tell us, tell us the difference on the alternate Roth tile thirty-six, the difference between the, the nine ninety-eight plan and the one point seven plan.
So the one point seven five million is the additional cost just in that quarter mile to run that thirty-six inch pipe and the appurtenances and all the other things that are necessary with that.
Because when I hear tile and then I see you have a picture with the hand down there, the old tile, so what you're saying, this is actually new pipe?
So that old tile is about a twenty-two inch old clay tile. It was built about a hundred years ago, we think, from the records. And that is long since clogged up. It's not functioning. So we would run a new thirty-six inch pipe essentially along the same route. I'm not even a hundred percent positive where the old tile is, but the owner actually showed me that, where it comes out in that picture there. And you can see it's mostly submerged. That's the problem. It's not so much the capacity here, it's the elevation. You need to keep that depth running at a steady downhill, although rather gentle grade, to someplace where it can drain properly, which is the upper left-hand, the picture in the upper left-hand corner of the PowerPoint.
Let me answer some questions.
Mm-hmm. And commissioners, I think you might have a lot of other pictures and PowerPoint pages printed out. I brought those, but not for presentation unless somebody has a question. I see you flipping through all those extra pages. I'm done.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, when you put the one up with the, with the red for the basin and the blue, it was very helpful because we just got a black and white, which looks like this, which was harder to see than what you put up there.
Sure, sure.
So that was helpful.
Of course. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Done. Romantic.
Good evening, board. What I have to add is essentially that the district has financing available to ensure that the residents do not have to pay for an assessment for this million-dollar construction project if it were approved to go forward. Between ARPA funds that this board has made available, as well as internal stormwater district funds, I just want to let everyone know that we have the funds available to go forward without an assessment for the construction, for the project as proposed, basically the one million dollar project. And then going forward on maintenance, it has been the board's policy not to charge or not to collect an assessment fee for ditch maintenance, that that comes out of the stormwater funds going in the future. And that's been the case since two thousand and fifteen. And that has been what we have been doing and are planning to continue to do into the near future with this board. From a financial standpoint, this would be a county borne expense through its resources in the stormwater district. But that, are there any other questions I might be able to answer?
How big is the area that, in the past, you've given us like, you know, how many, how many, how many property owners and how big of an area does this ditch service?
Can I just turn this in?
Sure.
Sure.
One hundred thirty-three acres, sixteen houses on Mitchell Road and one farm, the Roth Farm, as a matter of fact. And the properties that would be benefited, I, I think the number is around thirty-something. I don't know the exact number.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it said forty certified letters. It said forty.
Forty, yeah.
Okay. Do we have representatives from the township that would like to make comment?
I have no comment at this time.
Okay. But you're here, you're a township trustee?
Township trustee Mark Cunningham.
Mark Cunningham, okay. I recognize the name. Okay. And you're the only township trustee here tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Okay. Would, would the petitioner like to make any comment at this point in the meeting? We've, we've heard the presentation and the, the petitioner is Jennifer R. Smith. Is there anything that you would like to add at this juncture in the process?
Not at this time.
Okay. Now it's time for comment from other residents that are affected by the ditch. So who would like to speak first?
I will.
Very good. Absolutely. But it's not like church. We're not gonna pass the hat.
Just name and address.
So my name is Kathleen Roth. I live in the Roth farmhouse, but I don't own the Roth Farm. One of the questions I had is, and I wasn't at the first meeting, so this might have already been answered previously. How will this, how is this project expected to alleviate the backup of water? And you did talk about the elevation and, and the sediment. But when you look at Plum Creek and where it actually flows through, a lot of areas passed where the ditch is, that also floods quite often, probably tomorrow. Most of Sprague Road, a few houses on Sprague Road near Usher will be flooded. Even with the ditch, is it expected that it'll continue not to back up once the ditch is there, since there's other ditches pass that flow that do back up?
Sure. Um, the first part of your question is, we've engineered the elevations, and that's all available. I'd be happy to show you that in my office sometime. The second part of the question is, sure, it's gonna rain pretty hard. It's many times in the future, maybe even tonight. And we can only work with what we can work with. I'm not, I, I am unable to design a project that'll make all flooding go away. And you're absolutely right. The, the ditch ultimately goes further downstream, another mile or so gets to Plum Creek. The water rises. That's a federal flood plain. And it obviously doesn't help the situation, but it's remote enough. In my professional engineering judgment, this proj- the, the limits of the project are sufficient to get to what's termed a good and sufficient outlet.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I'm taking notes. I'm sorry, because I don't have anybody to take notes for me.
This is your meeting.
Another question I had is, and I know that they just briefed that the assessment charge and the annual fee more than likely won't be charged to the homeowners, but how was the assessment cost determined?
Another question for me. How was the assessment cost determined?
Yes.
Sure. It's based on an acreage, pro rata distribution. So I took the million dollars, roughly, and divided it by the hundred and thirty-three acres of all the parcels that would benefit by some form of improved drainage. The farm is there. The farmhouse on Osborne Road is the back, I believe it's the backyard, not the front yard, which drains someplace else. And all the other houses and farms and wooded lots and, and actually the, the township road, Mitchell Road, is also in there. All those acreages were added up, and it was all divided out equally. And that's how I arrived at the assessment value.
Thank you. What would the annual maintenance cost cover?
The annual maintenance is required to be in there at this time by the state law. So basically, one year of maintenance. And if the commissioners voted favorably, it would be perpetual. And the maintenance cost reflects the actual cost, as we've estimated now, for inspecting the ditch and all the other appurtenances, the pipes, the culverts or whatever. for inspecting the ditch and all the other appurtenances, the pipes, the culverts or whatever. Inspecting at least once a year. Mowing the vegetation that will tend to grow up and start to undo the cleaning process. On the average of about once a year, we would do it on an as needed basis. And then in the longer term, sediment will probably continue to accumulate. Runs off of farms, it runs off of yards and so forth. It'll wind up in the lowest available place, which is the bottom of the ditch. So on a more long-term or midterm basis, we would also dig out the future sediment. And we would do that, just for argument's sake, say every ten years, as opposed to every individual year. And that process would go on in perpetuity.
Thank you. You did say how often the annual maintenance would be completed. Would there be conditions that would have the maintenance completed at, like out of cycle? Let's say you did maintenance in the month of June on the ditch. Would there be something that could create it to be done out of, like, to me, what would be out of cycle? You might have to do it twice a year, three times a year versus once a year?
Well, that's a possibility. And if a tree fell in a storm, which happens, this is a pretty long piece of territory. Probably be, it probably happened more likely than not. If it were under county maintenance, give the county a call, you can start with my office, and we will address it.
Answered my next two questions. So I was going to ask who conducts the maintenance? And then if it was a contractor that does the maintenance, who inspects the annual maintenance? That meets contract requirements, so those are all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Kevin Kennedy, one zero six two zero Station Road. Excuse me. I, I know, I spoke at the last one, one we had, and I explained, you know, they dug the one ditch already on mine and I had granted an easement for that and how it turned out to be about the biggest mistake in my life. I've dealt with your maintenance crews. I've had them relieving themselves in my backyard when we look out the window. They leave garbage behind. They've caused damage. They buried three tractors in the bottom. Nobody ever came back and fixed it. And, you know, and now you want to add another four hundred and fifty feet of my property to this. And I just, I don't want it. On top of that, I have roughly in that four hundred and fifty feet, I think there's about four hundred and fifty trees. And, you know, I moved out there because I had a nice woods, I had a place to go back there and bow hunt. I won't have that anymore. And, you know, you're talking about taking a big piece of private property there. It's mine. It's not anybody else's. It's not the county's. It's not, you know, it's mine. And, you know, when this came up in two thousand nine, I told them if they wanted to do something back there, those people, somebody come and talk to me, and nobody did. And, you know, I'm, I don't want to flood anybody, but I don't also want to be flooded. And this plan that Peter's come up with is going to move the, or faster down to where this big ditch on the side of mine is, which has flooded before. Mr. Petro had seventy thousand dollars in damage when it flooded across the development. This is going to make it worse. And then it, it's just, it's not going to help me one bit, not one, other than it's just a land grab. The other thing it's going to do, and I've had problems with the one ditch already, is I'm going to have, I'm going to be constantly dealing with trespassers back there. And, and I've had it before, and I've had them get buried in the ditch with their ATVs. I called the sheriff, you know what they said? Nothing. They didn't do a thing. So I know what kind of support I'm going to have if this thing's put in. I'm going to call and nobody, they're not going to come out, or they're going to come out and do nothing. It's happened already. And I don't want it. And I don't need it. I don't want it. It's not going to help me. It does nothing for me. And then, you know, I asked Peter, there's big piles of spoils that were put along that ditch when it was dug. I mean, it's just crap. What about those? Well, we're just going to leave it. So he's already telling me he's going to leave a mess back there. And then I've asked, how big an area are you taking? How wide? What answer did I get from Peter? I don't know. So I really, you know, this plan isn't, has never been drawn to the point where I can say this is what it is and this is where it's going. And it hasn't happened. And I don't want it. I've told one people, the staff, my property, they went in there anyway. You know, I mean, it just, it shouldn't have been happening. And, you know, four out of five times, when they told me something, they lied to me. I mean, it was as simple as that. And I don't want it. I don't need it. It's not going to help me. I don't think the intended outcome is going to happen that you think it is. And then we got to go to part of that, there's fifty acres there, or fifty five actually. The man has hauled in roughly, that I can say about a half a million yards of dirt. And he's raised that fifty five acres. And he's raised it anywhere from a couple of feet to some of it, I think is almost fifty feet. And you can't take, you know, this fifty acres here and raise it and not, where does the water go? It goes on everybody else. And, and that's where, you know, this water has gotten worse and worse. It used to come across the fields, it would come up the station road and it would actually back up by the ditch. And then it would go and it goes across and it goes, it goes across Jakeway Road and that's how it would get rid of it. That water doesn't come up there anymore. And, you know, two inches of rain on that fifty acres is two hundred and ninety thousand gallons of water. And, and that's what we've had in the last day. The back of mine flooded. This ditch is not going to get, the water doesn't run uphill. It's not going to take care of this. This whole plan is just wrong. And, you know, I've talked to a lot of experts in the field and, you know, if you want to do something with the drainage, you collect the water where it's at, which would be up there towards Mitchell Road, up there towards the Roth property, not down on mine. I'm at the other end. And it, it just, this thing makes no sense. You know, Peter, we've tried to give him, you know, say, can we do this? But, you know, there's one plan and it's his plan. And he doesn't want to hear, he didn't want to hear anything else. I mean, it's obvious. And I don't want this thing. I don't want to see it. I don't want these people on my property. You know, like I said, I moved out there because I got a nice wooded piece of property. I've been there for thirty seven years. And, you know, and that ditch does flow. I was back there yesterday and it's flowing. Could it use a few branches and sticks pulled out? Sure, but that doesn't cost a million dollars. And, you know, the only other option, you know, if, if you're going to build a retention basin, you build it where the water's coming from, not down where it's going. And if they build a retention basin up there and put a tile, they can put a smaller tile and run it down. And then you no longer have that big yearly maintenance cost because they don't need to come in there and cut. They don't need to come in and do anything. And, like I said, I'm a hundred percent against it. You know, who's paying me for my trees? I haven't heard that. Who's paying me for, and I don't know how much property, but I assume it's about an acre that, that I'd be losing in this thing. And who's paying me for that? You know, I don't get any answers when I ask.
How do you figure you're losing an acre?
They're going to dig it all out and they're going to put a road in there and everything. I got, right now, it's how I like it. It's trees. It's nice, you know? What am I going to do with it now? And on top of that, I'm going to, it's, you know, they'll show up whenever they feel like it to do their maintenance or whatever. It doesn't matter if I'm back there bow hunting, they're there. And nobody calls and asks me first, you know? And the other thing is those trees, and I think you're going to hear more about this, the guy that raised that property, they shoot machine guns and everything else over there. And those trees have been what's catching the bullets. And we've got proof of that. The sheriff knows it. The sheriff picked up bullets with me. It's been on TV. We don't want it gone. You know, we want the, I want my trees to make, stay there and whatever. I think that you could do a project. I think that you could, you could, you know, dig a basin in the right place. And I think the basin plan that he designed was just to say, meet, tell me, say, well, no, because now he's going to take five, six acres of mine and dig it. And, you know, I believe it was a bluff, put it that way. And, like I say, I don't want it, don't need it. It's not doing anything for me. You know, the first thing you need to do is get rid of the half a million yards of dirt that this guy built up this property. I mean, it's got to go. You know, I mean, it's, if, you know, what am I supposed to raise mine now? I mean, and then you raise the net, where's it in? You know, and it just, like I said, this flooding's gotten worse. And it's gotten worse since we brought the dirt in. And that dirt was coming in twelve hours a day, sometimes seven days a week. And there was a truck every five minutes. And, like I said, they brought in, you know, you can look at aerial photos, you can see it. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not, I'm not bluffing.
Is that the fellow that did, he created some ponds and whatnot on his own property?
Yes, yeah. And there certainly was a lot of earthwork, but I specifically analyzed that. And if anything, that fellow has diverted a dozen acres or more of drainage away from the Kennedy property because now it comes out at Osborne Road, not in the ditch that we're talking about. And I was very careful to investigate that because, as he says, quite a lot of earthwork happened.
How would it get Osborne moved?
Well, it goes through all those ponds. You can see it in the aerial photos that you mentioned. It's like he basically dug.
There's a four inch pile that comes out of there. That's it. The water does not come through there like it used to, not at all. And there are three hundred sixty five days a year watching the water, believe me. It doesn't come through like it did.
And I offered to walk back there with you?
Yeah.
So I'll just remind the Board, I'm giving you reasonable engineering, professional engineering advice. I understand that not everybody agrees with me, but there it is.
I agree. And I'd like to let him finish your, you know, you had a good question and I have questions. I'd like him to answer those because what you're saying, you know, he is our expert for obvious reasons. And, and we not only have legal reason, but we have, we have history that shows his work is, is above average at the least. So, so if we're going to evaluate the, your claims of the damage, we need to know what Mr. Zwick and the staff have done to investigate your, your situation.
You know, we kept being told that this guy had all the permits he needs. And we've been putting out requests. I don't think there was ever a single permit issued by anybody. The township told us they never issued a permit. Soil and Water says we don't issue permits. So all this was done, he just did it. And bluffed everybody that he knew what he was doing or had permits. There was never any engineering plans that I can come up with. Like I say, you can't raise this fifty acres and not expect this fifty acres to flood. That's exactly what's happened. And that dirt.
This other property you're talking about, is it in Columbia Station as well?
Yeah. It butts right to this other property.
Okay.
Butts to the, like the Mitchell Road properties, it butts to them on their, it would be their west side and it butts to us on our south side. It's right there. And.
Yeah, you've indicated you didn't want people on your property. Have you, have you discussed, if we have a master plan, have you discussed that, that if you want to do your own maintenance on there, that that's, that's?
No, I want to leave it alone. You know, I'm not paying to have all this maintenance done. I mean, unless somebody's going to pay me for it. And.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
You, you say you're having flooding, but you don't want it alleviated?
It's, this ditch is going to do nothing to do with the flooding that I get. Because that flooding comes off of his fifty acres over there that he grazed and it comes right through the woods. It, it can't get back to that ditch. It's, a lot of it's hundreds of feet away. And that ditch, it's higher back there than where this is coming across. It's not going to do anything for that, not a thing. And, you know.
Have you, have you shared the survey with him so that he could see if his, his thoughts are anywhere near accurate for the, for the, because I know not everybody can see with their eye elevation.
Yeah, and it's, it's very flat. But as we met just a few weeks ago, Mr. Kennedy with you and Mr. Kowalski, I assured you that from my engineering analysis, your neighbor to the south with the fifty acres and all the earthwork actually channeled all of his water, some of which originally went your way, but most of which originally went directly to Osborne Road. So if anything, that fellow with all his digging has diverted some water away from your woods and your, and your neighbors there.
I tell you, I'm out there three hundred sixty five days a year and it hasn't. The water's flowing, a lot of it's flowing north right on our properties. And it's all flooded back there.
Well, I, I offered for you to show that to me a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't seen that, frankly.
Let's go. Like I say, I really don't see any benefit to this thing. I don't think it's going to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. It's, it just, you know, it's no good. And like I said, you know, you're basically, it's a land grab. I mean, you're coming onto private property and taking it.
The county does not want to grab land and maintain it without good reason.
I understand that, but everybody forgets, and Peter forgets, and Don forgets, it's my property.
I understand, but you and your neighbors have a similar interest.
I don't have an interest in having this done, not at all.
Well, I appreciate that you've stated several times, but again, this is a community kind of, of an event that we're being asked to consider because it's, there are others that do feel it will benefit. And we're just trying to, we're just, this hearing is for the purpose of collecting the information that, so that the Board can make a somewhat intelligent decision.
So you guys just make a decision and then they come in and knock the wood down?
Well, we could decide not to do it. We're here collecting the information to decide, you know, if this suits the public purpose. We can't let, the same way that we can't let that property owner with the fifty acres impact you negatively, we can't let one person along the ditch negatively impact the others. We have responsibility to our neighbors, all of us.
But I think this needs to start with getting that fifty acres of dirt back down to grade. That's where a lot of water's coming from.
I don't know anything about that. And, and I have to believe that if Peter has, has taken that into effect in his, in his calculations of what he's doing, then, then that becomes a legal issue for the township to see if he's violated any rules.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, it's your, when, when you were here last time, you said your property was adjacent to the housing development? Is that what you said? So you're the, the first one there behind the housing development? Okay.
And like I say, when they were going to build the development and I knew people had water problems, I let them dig that. Half of that ditch is on my property. And like I said, it turned out to be a big mistake. And, and not only has the contractor buried machines down there and poured things up trying to get it out of there, the county even buried an excavator in it.
I see where you're at. Where's the guy with the shooting range that you said that's buffering the trees?
Straight south. There's like three or four. There'd be mine, and then there's another one and another one. Then the next, like, two or three properties is his.
You said he's, you're saying that those trees are buffering his shooting range?
That what?
That you, you said that those trees that would come out would be buffering this fellow's shooting range?
Well, yeah, but they're, they're not his trees. I mean, the bullets shouldn't be going in there. The sheriff came out and picked up handfuls and I still don't see any charges. I mean, that's been months.
I, I, we've heard about this fellow and the property, the properties around it that, that ended up getting lower. Anyway, so it's not for this meeting.
You'll hear from somebody else about the bullets lying here and the trees stopping.
The picture that was shown with the ditch that's maintained and the houses are in the background, is that the ditch that you're talking about that's half on your property?
Yes.
What about the pictures not accurate then? Because it shows, it, it, it looks like it's manicured and, and functioning.
Well, it is. I mean, they, they, they came out and mowed it this year. But like I say, the problem is, is the garbage they leave behind and the headaches I get. And then, like I say, they didn't bury a machine this year, but they have other times. And.
I would hope they would come out when it's a little dry.
You would hope. When they, when the county showed up with their excavator, I went back there and told them. I said, you'll be in the bottom of the ditch within ten, fifteen minutes. He was in the bottom of the ditch in less than half of that. There's no sense, you know? You don't work when, you don't work on a slope like this when it's soaking wet.
Right.
And that's what they, they were going to do it anyway. And that's what they did. And, and the damage has never been fixed. There's a big chunk out of the side of the ditch. You know, they promised they'd come back. I'm still waiting. It's probably, probably been three years.
Sounds like we have multiple issues to address. Tonight, we're going to talk about whether we do a permanent and. Tonight, we're going to talk about whether we do a permanent improvement or not, but it sounds like, it sounds like the county staff and several departments needs to, needs to clean up their act.
Yeah, they do. And, uh, absolutely, yeah.
Those issues aside, if, 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 if they didn't leave trash behind, if they didn't relieve themselves in the backyard, and they didn't come out and bury equipment, would you still be opposed to the, to the ditch?
I wouldn't be as opposed, but there's other problems, too. And it, just like I said, there's a, there's a big mess of spoils when they dug this thing. I don't know who was responsible for digging it. It was dug before I got there. Um, you know, if you're going to do this, do it right, and all that.
Wouldn't the spoils get in the way of the water getting into the ditch?
Well, yeah, it's created a dam there. The water, you go back to now, you need hip boots to walk behind it. Yeah, it floods probably, I don't know, about four or five acres a night. And, uh, yeah, I mean, that dirt needs to come out of there. He tells me, "No, they're going to leave it." And, uh, any suggestions we made that weren't in Peter's plan, he doesn't want to do them. You know, it's as simple as that. Is it going to cost a little bit to remove those spoils? Yeah, but not much.
Well, guys with gray beards could be pretty determined.
No. Yeah.
Commissioner, I'll clarify, but thank you for the vote of confidence. So, what you saw in the pictures is there are piles of spoils that have been there for more than 30 years when you moved in.
Probably since the 70s.
Since the 70s. So, they dug this giant ditch, and they piled the dirt up on both sides, and now the trees have grown up. In, in the plan, I would remove the spoils on one side. That way, we don't have to cut down the trees on the other side, but I would leave the taller pile on the northwest side and remove the southeast spoils. And the purpose is to create a grass path to allow construction in the near future, and then in the, in the farther end of the future, to allow inspection and occasional maintenance and access and so forth. Basically, there's access at either end, um, that would be available to the maintenance crews in the future.
But the spoils, you say, are not from recent work or, or doing the ditch that we're looking at? They were, those are historically, they've been there-
Well, more than 30 years or 40 years, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we would eliminate one-
Well, I think that's important to your allegation that somebody built the ditch before, and they didn't do it right. If those spoils weren't part of that project, then, you know, that's a different issue than cleaning the ditch.
Well, I know, but you're going to do this project, aren't you going to remove it and make it right? You're just going to leave it there?
I think Mr. Zwick answered your question. If he took all those piles out of there today, all the trees would have to go with him. My guess is the trees are growing in the piles.
Yeah, I can show you those pictures again if you want, but yeah, they're growing on top. I would remove them on one side only, to provide access.
Okay.
And the other side, they're your trees, they're your piles, and no, I see no public benefit to remove those.
Yeah, just leave it like a shithole.
Well, but if-
Actually, we'll clean it up, and we'll provide drainage where there is none, on the other side of the spoil.
It sounds like you have a 40-year-old problem that wasn't caused when we built the other ditch in recent years, whatever year it was, but, you know-
It was done when that ditch was dug. And they just, they dug it, and they put the dirt next to it, and just piled it all up, and they built a dam all the way along it. That needs to go. None of that water from the back can get up to that ditch, should be gone, as long as the piles are there. That's what I'm saying, and it, it just, if you're going to do it, do it right. But if you don't want to do it right-
Well, today, there is a, at least one gap that I saw. You probably dug it. In fact, you used to have a culvert there, I saw on the old maps, that's not there now. So, that relieves the water on the northwest side that I do not see the need at this time to remove. On the south side, we would remove those, we would provide positive drainage, so just outside the easement, which would probably be about 50 feet wide, to include top of bank to top of bank, plus the southeast side access. And I do not want to leave a bunch of puddles. I want to eliminate that and allow it to drain gently into the ditch. So, we would actually significantly dry up that part of your backyard.
Well, how's that water going to get over them six-foot-high piles of dirt?
Well, the six-feet-high piles are on the other side.
And well, that leaves the dirty-
Well, you've got a, a gap cut through there.
There's one gap in 400 and some feet.
If the commissioners were so direct, I'd be happy to cut another gap or two.
I can guarantee you, if you go back there now, you're not walking back on that side without having boots above your knees. That's how much water's sitting back there.
So, that, that land generally drains to the east, and it would run along the bottom of the pile of spoils until such a point it can be relieved, which is exactly what the condition is today, that area that I was just describing.
That would be sitting there for months.
And, and again, I, I'm not quite clear, so, you know, I apologize. But the piles that we're talking about were done by the county at recent times, or they were done 40 years ago?
No, there's, there's two ditches. The ditch with the spoils in the woods was done before Mr. Kennedy arrived, I'm guessing about 40 years ago.
Might have even been done by the property owner.
The one with the subdivision is about 25 years old, and as he stated, he negotiated with the subdivision developer. They constructed that ditch, and it eventually came onto the county maintenance through a different process about 25 years ago.
Okay.
There were no spoiled piles with the manicured ditch.
But we don't even know who dug that ditch and left the spoils. It could have been a private property owner creating his own ditch.
Well, it had to be. Sure, who else would it be?
Okay. I'm just trying to determine who's responsible for the piles. He obviously thinks we are.
We are not.
If you're going to dig that project and do it, you're just going to leave that mess there? I mean, it's, it'd be ridiculous to do it that way.
Well, I understand that, but I, I think the county government is the last person you, you want to hire to clean up your private problem. We, we tend to be very expensive and very regulatory oriented.
Yeah.
But perhaps there's an opportunity to negotiate that with the event, if we approve this and the contractor is retained, maybe there's an opportunity for you to work individually with the contractor to remedy that while he's doing the work for the county.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, there won't be any work back there, and Andy, I can stop it, that's what's going to happen.
I appreciate that.
All right.
I appreciate that. Is there anyone else like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Niger. The first picture people saw was by address. It was my house. I've lived there for 40 years, over 40 years. I've been dealing with this problem ever since I moved in. I have three sump pumps downstairs to keep the basement dry. They can each, they're each $1,000 apiece. So, I know what we're talking about. But we're not just talking about rainwater here, because all the septic systems on our street drain to the ditch. And when the ditch gets full, we're getting septic water back into our yards. I got it back so, one time so bad, I called the health commissioner. He came out, he said, "One of the ways we could fix this is have you move out of your house." I, "Wait a minute, move out of my house?" "No," he says, "I'll talk to the commissioners." So, he did, and they came out and did something. It started to drain. But as time goes on, things happen. And nothing was ever built to the standards that we need to have now. If a kid, my neighbor has three little ones, little ones. And I tell you, if one of those kids gets sick because of that, there's going to be one hell of a mess. You know it, and I know it. And I would tell him exactly what to do, because I've been dealing with it for over 40 years. But we have no, no real rights to anything, except since my neighbor instituted a lawsuit. So, I joined in with that lawsuit, because I'm tired of dealing with that water. It sits, it sits there any length of time, it starts to stink. I mean, let's, let's get on with what we have to do to get this thing done, so somebody doesn't get sick. Columbia Township still has areas that need to have the same things done to it, because they allow a lot of the septic systems to drain to the road. And you saw my yard, it's worse now than it ever has been. Now, if we can get along with that, I thought my, coming here to tell you, I've been there over 40 years. So, I'm tired of dealing with it. I really am. I turned 81 years old this year. I'll, I'll probably get buried in the yard, the way things are going. So, anyway, guys, I appreciate your time and listening to me complain, but I think it, it would do a good service to let people know that there are young kids that could get very ill because of what comes back on your property. It's not just my property, it's my next-door neighbor's property, both ways.
Well, thank you for your comments in two, two ways. Number one, I think that's, that's something that I've not heard-
I'm sorry, sir, I'm deaf. I had, I was a fireman for over 30 years, and air horns and sirens have done my hearing in, and the hearing aids I got to work with a dam.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
And for, for the audience, for two parts of this. Number one is the sanitation part, because it's true, that's how septic tanks work. They go to ditches that go to creeks that go to the river that go to the lake. And secondly, one of the things that I'm stunned with is that this is the second ditch hearing that I've participated in, and this is one of those problems that time won't fix, time will make it worse. As the sediment rises, it stands to reason that the backup will increase. And, and we have, we have a gentleman who said that it's getting worse and continues to get worse, and I would think that that's because the sediment continues to fall out. Anyone else would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, please come to the front.
Hello, I'm Regan Kowalski, 10798 Station Road and also 26440 Osborne. I have the property that the ditch first comes into, the Roth tile comes into. And I'm not, Peter said that I'm, I'm against any, I'm, I'm not against any. The people on Mitchell, I drive by there, I see. I wouldn't want that in my yards. I mean, it floods, it just does. How we go about it, just have a difference of opinion. I think a tile should be put in to minimize what, the amount of destruction back there. You know, I bought that property, too, because I like trees, I like that. There's a cost associated with trees. I went up to big trees on 82 there, just asked them how much a maple tree four inches would cost, and they were from $800 to $1,200 a tree. I mean, they're, they're not cheap. I'm even willing to, to give on that, okay? It's just, I owned a business here in Lorain County, I was, I owned a Ford dealership in Avon Lake, and, and I know when, uh, they built the dealerships on Chester Road there, water was retained on the property. Those are permanent ponds there now. Water was retained on the property, and then it's let out through a tile, the, the dealership's over there. I think something should be done the same way over, over there. As far as assessments go, my, you know, my letter says it's $66,000 and $2,600 a year in maintenance. That's what my letter says. And it's, I mean, it does state in here that it's recommended it be suspended. You know, I mean, nothing against you personally, but, you know, tax dollars are like crack to governments. I mean, it, it just, they, they need as much as they can get. They want as much as they can get.
We're trying to fix that.
Yeah. I mean, there's so many moving parts to this. It, it, you have to remedy what's going on, on Mitchell. And Kevin's my brother-in-law, he and I disagree on some things. I understand based on, you know, I, I listened to him with, with that ditch that he has on the side of him, it's, it's been a nightmare. You know, I've, I've seen the, the mess that's left there, so I, I don't blame him for any of that. I, you know, if I were him, I'd, I'd have the same opinion. The elephant in the room, and, and I made a copy here, and I can give each one of you, it makes it real simple here, it's right off of your website, if I could come up and give you this real quick.
Sure. The guy with the guns in the back of the room, he's not up here.
What was your last name again?
Kowalski.
I was looking, did you come in this morning?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking in the minutes here for your statement last time.
I need one, too, sir. Do you have an extra one?
Yes. That line is, is the current ditch.
Right, right.
That's the 55 acres in question that's been raised. Yeah. This is Mitchell. These are the people that are affected, okay?
Yeah.
These homes right here, and-
I'm going to show on here what he's talking about. Can you pick that up? Victor?
Okay, I, I, I can tell you, I've, um-
Victor?
I've been there roughly 30 years on-
I put your picture up there, so you can-
So, Mr. Kowalski, can you state, so the people that are reading, that are, that are watching this, the box is-
The, yeah, the, the highlighted yellow box, that's the roughly 55 acres that there's been hundreds of thousands of yards of soil brought in. And I understand, you know, Peter looks at it the way he does, I just disagree. You know, one of the advantages of being in the auto business all these years, most of my business was commercial, builders, you know, between Coff and Candelara's and, and, I mean, I mean, it's, I've, I've, a lot of people, surveyors, engineers, okay? You take 55 acres and raise it, it's got to go somewhere. I've hunted those woods, the 48 acres, which is the 16 that I have, which borders this, the, right to the north. Used to mow paths for Marga back there, that owned it before me. And it's, it's a swamp, it's absolutely a swamp. When it would rain, like it just has, because my brain gauge told me there was three inches out there, and that water would come up the station road, sometimes come across station road. I looked at it this morning, there was a puddle about the size of this in front of the fence there. It's nothing like it was. I, I, I don't understand how Peter comes up with, it's helped me. I walk in the back of the property there, it is, it is unbelievably wet. It's never been like that. I think everybody on Mitchell will agree, over the last half decade or so, the problem's gotten worse. And raising 55 acres doesn't help this situation. I think, I think, you know, it's a non-starter for me till something is done here. Zoning in Columbia Station, I asked, "Does he have any permits?" And I was told, "No," by Mr. Lanzo. I called Soil and Water, Mr. Fisher. He told me, "We don't issue permits, that's your zoning." Well, how this, how this all happened? Yeah, there's ponds there, but when you dig those ponds, you, you bring that dirt out, and what do you do? You spread it. You raised it. And then, and drive by there, look up the fence. I mean, that's, that's a place to start. You know, you want me to get on board with this, start there. I know for 30 years, the, the water just doesn't come that way anymore. The tile that comes under station empties into a 36-inch tile. Years ago, and I know it was smaller, it was resized, coming underneath. This morning, it wasn't half-full coming underneath there, underneath station to Osborne. And it's the, I can- I own, I own that plus an Osborne here, right here.
The second one in?
Correct. And so, the tile comes over, and it comes right through my front yard, because I put a 36-inch. They wanted me to put a 24-inch, 25-inch, but I put a 36. And so, it comes right through my front yard, where it empties, okay? And, and it, it's nothing like used. That, that 36-inch tile would be-
The reason why you're saying that is because the water's not coming from that property?
No. I know, I know he believes it does. No, I know, I know he believes it does, but I know what I see.
Trying to follow your logic.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know what I see. The amount of water that's, that's, that's coming, like I said, it would dam up along the ditch on station, back up into that field. Ken Beener, which owns the one property, he doesn't own it anymore. But, you know, Beener had landscaping ties that would float from time to time. Water's almost up to his house. I haven't seen that. And it, it's Mitchell Rose gotten worse over the past half decade, I think this is contributing to it. So, I, I believe we should just put the brakes on this, address this, address this. And I personally, I, I notice a thousand bucks for a double wall, twenty-foot piece of thirty-six inch tile. It's a thousand dollars. I don't know where another million seven's coming in. I mean, if, you know, give me the specs.
It was seven hundred and fifty thousand more, initially. So the project is a million to do the tile. That's what I, what I wanted to ask you, because I'm looking all over in the minutes for you, sir. I can't, I, I know you were here last time, but I can't find you in here.
Yeah.
But I think it was Commissioner Moore and I that were here, that were here, and you were the one that proposed the idea of the tile. So you were, if I'm remembering this correctly, the reason why we had the engineer-
Well, it was myself and Kevin. And I, I just, I, I, I don't understand it. I mean, I'd like to see the estimate when, when, and maybe it's a different grade of tile. But I know the thirty-six inch that I put in, it's, it's a double wall, and it's, it's a plastic double wall, thirty-six inch. It's a thousand dollars of, for a twenty-foot section. I mean, you can get them for eight fifty. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna use that, or maybe something more commercial. But another million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't make sense.
I'm getting to the number for you.
Well, it is another million, because it was a million dollars or two point seven five to put a tile in. It's another million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the original nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar ditch.
Peter, can you clarify that? I, I thought the, the project was a million dollars or nine ninety-eight, and if you did it with the tile, I'm looking at this thing right here, it says one point seven. So is that in addition to the original million?
Yes, it says additional one point seven five million.
You are correct, sir.
And I've got, this, this is public record, I'd be happy to hand this to Mr. Ken, Kowalski. Yes, it totals up at the bottom one. This is the additional cost to just do the quarter mile through, across the three properties in the woods. Kowalski, there's a, a brother of this, Mr. Kennedy, and then there's Mr. Kennedy, who already spoke today. I've got everything in there, as prescribed in the state code. I've even got a year of maintenance cost. I've got bonds, I've got a contingency, I've, I took out the credit for not digging the ditch across that quarter mile. And I've got, it looks like two dozen items, all with ODOT numbers. I've got mobilization, I've got temporary erosion sediment control, I've got tree clearing. I've got removal of the old clay tile, recompact, regrade and compact. Excavation, including hallway, very expensive, because we don't want to dump the dirt along the side and make another problem for you and maybe somebody else in the future. I've got ditch cleanout, including hallway, I've got stabilized limestone aggregate driveways with geotextile, so that you can get in and out to the remainder of your property on the other side of the ditch. I've got rock channel protection at the inlet and the outlet of the pipe, because once you build the pipe and concentrate that flow, the velocity goes up and the erosion potential gets a lot higher, so you have to put in large rock to control that. We've got large catch basins, they're four feet by four feet. I've got a full head wall for the thirty-six inch pipe. I've got a concrete masonry bulkhead, I've got a quarter mile, one thousand two hundred and fifty feet of thirty-six inch pipe. It's the double wall. I don't know what, you priced it out at last, but these prices are all based on our recent experience with public contracts. And I will say that the construction prices have literally skyrocketed over the last few years. But I've got that in there. I've got reconnecting drain pipes that we might encounter. I've got a seeding and mulching, class one and class two. I've got topsoil, so we can get the better quality seeding to grow, commercial fertilizer. Swale, erosion control in the swales with some straw mat. And even an allowance for timber mats, the other kind of mats, timber mats, because it's gonna be wet back there if you, if we try to install a pipe. Those are the, that's a summary of the items. I've also got engineering, construction, we've already paid for topographic surveying. I've got cost to bid advertise it and provide inspection, and I think I already mentioned the maintenance cost. Those are the components here, you're welcome to a copy of this, it's a public record. That's my engineering estimate. And Commissioner Hung, that, I priced that out as an additional cost, so if you start with the one million, this is the additional one point seven five, that's why I showed the total of two point seven five million.
And I apologize, Peter, you do have that ready at the top of the sheet.
Lot of numbers, yeah.
And I know Matt, my assistant back, back there, he made a couple of extra copies as well. And he can always make more copies if somebody wants to see it.
One other thing too, is on, on the, the letter I received, it says damage is zero. I mean, your damages aren't gonna be zero when you take down trees and you widen this. You know, I went back there with the tape, and I measured, it's about roughly twenty-two feet across. And, and if you're gonna change the grade, you're, I mean, when you were at my home a few weeks ago, I mean, it, we, you couldn't tell me what the, you know, the grade, where, where are we gonna end up? So if we're at twenty-two feet now, and, and you have to grade it out so vegetation can grow, you know, how wide is that gonna be? And then what's the lane gonna be for it? So are we at sixty feet, seventy-five feet? So that, I mean, it's, it's, we weren't sure at that time. And, and that's, that's a lot. I understand this, my parcel has, has the smallest part that's gonna be altered. But there's, there's still a cost associated with it. And then you have on here that I'm gonna benefit eight point nine one acres. There are no spoils on the east side. I walked that, I did it again, and Kevin and I have walked that. Spoils are all on the east side, from, spoils are all on the east side. There, or I'm sorry, on the west side, all the spoils are on the west side, there's nothing on the east side. And, and you have here that I'm gonna benefit eight point nine one acres, and you're assessing me sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I, I don't see how I'm gonna benefit from that. You know, the only, the elevations I get off the auditor's website show that ditch is at, at eight hundred point two feet. And the property going in a couple hundred feet, seven ninety-eight point four, seven ninety-eight point seven. I mean, it's, it's lower than the ditch. Based on the assessment, I, I mean, how is it gonna benefit nine acres that I own? I, I don't see it. I think what's gonna benefit my nine acres is if fifty-five acres of soil was put back to the way it was. And, and it's, Mitchell Rogue just keeps getting worse. And, and we just had a stop order, I guess, because he was bringing in days worth of triaxle trailer loads of dirt and raising more. And it just doesn't end out there. I mean, this gets addressed, and, and I'll listen. I'm, I'm open, I mean, I'll, I'll work with you on this. But until this does, and, you know, and with all due respect, I, I don't believe you. I looked at that corner for thirty years. The water isn't there like it used to be. It's going somewhere. I've hunted that forty-eight acres to the north for thirty years, actually longer than that, since he's had it. I, in the fall, and it's never been like this, it just hasn't. Well, what's changed? Fifty-five acres of elevated land.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, I, if you-
Mr. Kowalski, you keep bringing up these fifty-five acres of elevated land, and is there any consensus among the neighbors on, on why this fellow's doing this? Allegedly doing this, I mean-
Well, he's not allegedly, he is doing it.
Do you have any idea on?
Well, he's, he's, he's built an enormous range that he shoots big machine guns, and, and, and you'll hear from people from the development next door. You know, the one gentleman had a bullet go through his umbrella where his kids were sitting. Sheriff's been out to the property, picked up bullets. They don't want a single tree removed, because that's, that's kind of a backstop. People have been, they can hear the bullets hit the trees. So, like I said, there's so many moving parts to this, this whole thing has to be addressed. And, and it's been going on for years. Group of us met with J.D., nothing happened. Sheriff's been out, nothing happens. Been up to the trustee's office, nothing happens. I, I must say, I, I do believe that Rick up at the office there did put a stop work order on, on the latest bit of dirt coming in. But it, it's just, address this, and then we'll, we'll talk, and then I'll talk to Kevin.
Have you discussed any other alternative except taking the dirt back out?
Well, one thing I don't understand is, you know, Mother Nature takes the path of least resistance. That water does flow back there. I mean, it does. It, it, before this big rain, I went back there again, and, and the water flows. It, the water runs. It, it does. Does it need to be, yeah, there's a lot of sediment in the bottom there. Whole lot of sticks and branches in there, absolutely, I get it. Why we're gonna dig an all-new ditch when the water's flowing in the one that Mother Nature took from Mitchell over to the development, it flows. Why don't, why don't we utilize that one instead of digging another one? I mean, there's gotta be some cost savings there. You know, there's just-
I think we're digging another ditch, or cleaning the ditch.
Right, the- The engineering proposal is basically to make the ditch that's there now work properly. We'll set the elevation correctly, and we'll use the engineering standards. May I address any of that, or do you care?
My question was, as a board, and as an engineer, it seems like there's fifty-five acres that's, seems to be an issue, number one.
Sure, let me, let me address that.
But we bottle that all in with a ditch cleaning.
Well, that's my point. I can assure the board that in my professional engineering opinion, the fifty-five acres has no significant connection to the ditch or these fellows' properties. I had the occasion, because of the sensitivity of visiting those properties, I visited the other property. I walked along a path that's roughly down the property line. I understand it isn't entirely on the other guy's property, it sometimes encroaches on yours. But the point is, that's all a separate issue. I've assured myself beyond a reasonable engineering doubt that there is no significant water coming over the property line. I've asked you to, I've, I've offered to go out there for you to show it to me. I don't see any evidence. I don't see any rivulets in the ground, I don't see any evidence of any flowing of water. And what I had seen was that your neighbor with the fifty-five acres made a big effort to dig a lot of ponds, and he channelized them, he connected them all with channels that now flow to Osborne Road. And some of the, the surface runoff that used to flow in your general direction is no longer flowing that way. And he's diverted almost all of his water. And perhaps you misread the auditor's map, that's one of the ones that I looked at, we had some detailed topography done as well. And that's the basis, the prorata basis, so eight point nine acres out of the hundred and thirty-three, that's your share. I multiplied that by the cost estimate to come up with an assessment to re, to satisfy the state law. But the commissioners are here telling you, don't worry, nobody's gonna pay the construction cost out of their pocket. So, I, I don't know what else to tell you, except that, by the way, if you do a project, as one of the commissioners mentioned, under public auspices with prevailing wages and all the other things that have to go in there, it's definitely gonna cost more than if the owners were to maintain their ditch themselves or build their own pipes. By the way, you're, that, that is provided for in the code. If the owners wanted to construct their own portion of any project that the commissioners approve to those same specifications, that you have that right to do that, then we would inspect it afterwards and so on and so forth. I think it'd be a lot easier, as some other commissioner mentioned, to allow us to drain your property correctly. And in the process, drain a lot of other properties correctly. Today, that's your ditch and your family members' ditches. That's the bottleneck that I described, that needs to be fixed. And a bunch of other things need to be fixed too, but that's a, a significant thing, and that's the basis of my recommendation. It's not just to antagonize you and, and your, your family members, I'm sorry if I did. But that's, those are my findings that I'm reporting to the board today.
I, I understand, but I, I know you're not here to antagonize, antagonize me. I, I get that. I, I also realize thirty years of being back there. And, and I know it's gotten worse over the last half decade. It's just, it's, it's terrible. You're saying that water flows to the ditch, I'm telling you, it doesn't, because it's just a stagnant, stinking puddle of, of practically the whole property now. When Marga had it, we'd be over at Marga's, it was never like, it was never like that, it just isn't like that. And, and it's just a difference of opinion. You know, you're, you're, you do what you do, I do by, by what I see and what I experience. And thirty years worth of me going back there, I could walk back there. Sure, we'd get some big rains, and, and like everything else, my front yard this morning, and my backyard, never seen it like it. It's pretty much gone now. That property, you, you just can't tell me, even with that fancy map you had at my dining room, dining room table, it just, it doesn't do what you're saying it does. I, I look at it, I see it, it, it just doesn't. I just, I'll leave it at that. I mean, I appreciate your time. And if you'd like to get together and discuss anything else with this, I'm, I'm retired now, so I can-
He retired and ran for office, so maybe that's something.
Maybe trustee.
Yeah, my, yeah, my concern is, we're here to clean a ditch, and we, but there's multiple problems, as you acknowledged. And whether or not, as commissioners, do we have the ability to do something right now with this fifty-five acres?
How, how so?
I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, I, I don't know what you're asking.
Can we, can we, it seems like what they're saying is that this is part of the drainage. This is, there's a increased flooding because of the increased lift in the property.
Is he a benefited parcel?
Is the fifty-five acres one of the benefits?
A very small, few acres.
I don't know his name. I mean, what is his name, do you know?
Well, and then, are, are we able to do what?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like, if they're suggesting, again, to make a deal. I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing is, because it sounds like, right now, if we have the position, I'm sorry, just a second. Thank you. Well, I mean, now's the time, if this is the time to make a deal with people at the table, if we're gonna be making decisions. Usually what, they've already, it sounds like they've struck out with the sheriff's office, it sounds like they struck out with the insurance. I mean, are we the last chance for the public to actually somehow bring people together and settle this fifty acres as part of the ditch? It sounds like there's a benefit here, he's part of, he's attached to the property.
But I, I don't know what you would, I don't know.
Either, because nobody can tell me what's going on. Like, okay, all I'm hearing is, they've lifted it up. I got a debate between people on whether or not it does cause more flooding or not.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. So, if, from what I've heard, is if they said that if somehow we could fix this issue over here, they might, they might be conducive to maybe letting us or allow, being okay with the ditch cleaning. Then I also heard they want to be compensated on trees. You know, so I've heard a lot of things on, like, there's a small sliver of maybe a way to make a deal work with everybody.
Are we, are we doing it?
I don't know, but I don't think we're doing that today. I think today we're just having a hearing.
With the fifty-five parcels, or fifty-five acres, is that in any way, is the improvement in any way, shape, or form on those parcels?
No.
No.
So, are you asking whether the improvement would be on those fifty-five acres? Because as of right now, it's not.
Just wondering if this is a point where, because it sounds like, it sounds like from, I'm hearing from these three property owners are most of the issues going on, flooding and ditch cleaning, that they seem to be blaming this property here.
With this project, with the petition that's before the board, is there anything that the board can- With this project, with the petition that's before the board, is there anything that the board can do to then circumvent any, elevation that one of the individuals has created on their own property? No, no.
I don't know.
There's nothing you can do?
No.
That, could we in any way, shape or form alter the course, whether termini or anything going on with this ditch improvement to coincide on the property or to, no, I mean, that would, as I understand, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but as I understand it, the, um, the drainage issues are being alleviated by your plans, correct?
Yes, and if I were wrong and Mr. Regan is right, the water that comes toward his property would be better drained away if this project could clean out the ditch. I'm not wrong, though.
By the way, what is the, what is the timetable? If, if we were to proceed with the project, is, are we, are we gonna get that done during this year? This season, if you will?
Um, if you authorize me to proceed, I could have it out the bid in as early as sixty days. Uh, that would put us in the middle of the summer. We could adjust that to any convenient time. We don't have to immediately enter into a contract, if that's the nature of the question.
Well, I'm just saying, if there, if there's no, uh, if it's, if it's not important that we proceed at, at full speed, if we're, if this is gonna be a twenty-twenty-five project, then we, then we have time to address some of these other issues. But if it's our intention to do this in twenty-twenty-four, then time isn't, time is an issue.
Yes, and I'll restate that, I am prepared to make it a twenty-twenty-four project.
Okay, it's a project could be done this year, which would mean next spring, we would not have the problems we're having this spring.
Correct.
Well, that's the debate. And that's the, the other issue at hand is, we are not charging the landowners. And we just, the only, like, we got six-and-a-half million dollars of federal dollars for these projects that we have to deal with. And if we don't get it spent by twenty-six, it goes back to the feds. So, maybe, you know, are we moving too fast? Well, this thing's been, looks like, we were here last April, April seventh, was it? Then May, April third, so a year ago tomorrow. I mean, are we gonna be able to? I, I, I just don't understand how, if this ditch is cleaned out, it sounds like to me it fixes a lot of flooding issues. Then I'm hearing from, that's the debate, right? Who's to blame for it and can you pass, pass that blame over? Well, that's lawyers and engineers to have that fight, not us, right?
I, I don't really address the issue of who's to blame. I'm just showing you the way to solve the drainage problem.
The way it is. Sir, you're standing, does that mean you'd like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr. Roth.
Please come to the, please come to the front.
Sorry for making you stand.
Did you participate in the swearing-in, are you all set?
Yes, I'm all set. My name's, uh, Ken Roth, one of the property owners. Uh, it was my no-good rotten great-great-great-grandfather who started all this trouble when he had the, uh, timidity to join with his neighbor and take care of a drainage problem that they had in the neighborhood. Called it the Roth Ditch. They, uh, petitioned it. The county engineered it. They hired a guy with a mule. And he took two years putting that infrastructure in. Now, it was all agricultural land. People took care of their ditches, 'cause it affected their livelihood. And that started in eighteen-seventy-six when Christian, that no-good son of a gun, uh, bought that property, the Roth Farm. So, that's been about a hundred and, hundred and some years. But as families mature, they're, uh, expand, the land gets split. There has been, in my eighty-one years, not one person who has had a, uh, parcel on any of this, uh, property that's under consideration now, has done a darn thing other than blamed his neighbor when he got wet feet. We've got, uh, spent about half of our time here talking to two guys who got a, uh, a neighbor. It's a public nuisance. And now they've got some additional water, or they perceive that they've got some additional water that happens to be in this project we're supposed to be talking about, that he blames on his fifty-some acres that were here. Your engineer has done, uh, his studies and determined that they may be mistaken. However, people who want you to take care of a problem that is outside the scope of this project, would wanna take advantage of this. And I won't agree to that until you fix this project over the year. So, I'm kind of upset about how these, uh, meetings kinda get off track. And I implore you to move back to the reason we're here and not about the guy's problem who happens to be adjacent to this, trying to take advantage of that. Because the problem that he's talking about's not gonna be solved easy. If you get yourself familiar with, uh, that fifty-some acres, it's gonna be a bigger problem than this, uh, darn ditch, which has been a problem for a hundred-and-fifty years. Thank you.
Mr. Roth, thank you for your comments. I, I understand what you're saying. I've been hearing about this property since I first started and the Board of Revisions and other property owners around there and the property taxes and issues going on with this property. I, I hear you and understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
You wanna be so hard on your great-great-grandpa?
He was actually a pretty good guy.
Sounds like it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I didn't swear in, I just have a question. Are you gonna give any testimony?
Sorry, it's really quick, go ahead.
Sir, answer yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you were about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Just ask a question.
Your name and address.
My name's Kenny Musconish, I live at one-oh-six-one-five Mitchell Avenue, Road. I'm late to the party, I just got the notice today about this meeting. I had a medical thing, I was not around. But last I remember was last year. I got a letter about this time last year. I thought there was talk about two different culverts or something on, on Mitchell. Does this include any, any of the ditches on Mitchell going north?
No.
No, it's just that behind-
Right, right in the vicinity of, um, I forgot your address. One-zero-nine-five-five, and you're at one-oh-six-something?
Yeah, that's what I got a notice.
So, you're pretty far north. There's a, there's another ditch, it's, goes to the Carpenter Ditch up north?
And that has nothing to do with this?
No.
That's, that's all I wanna know.
Thank you. Mr. Roth did raise an issue and stole a little bit of my question, and that is that I would, I, I think the only way to resolve the, the faith in the, in the engineer's work is to, if, if, you know, I appreciate anecdotal, uh, opinions. Because, you know, what you see is the truth that you know. Whether it's based in, in fact or not, it's based in perception. And I, I don't wanna argue with your perceptions, uh, either one of you. But I would think that if you wanna challenge it, somebody should be retained as an engineer to review his work and see if, 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 if in fact, you know, you are, your perception does not meet your opinion of his work. You know, now, if I, if I've got a problem with an engineer, I hire an engineer I trust to get involved in the process. If I have a lawyer I don't trust, I hire another lawyer to, to review that work. And, uh, and I think that I, that would go a long ways towards trying to resolve the issue. As far as the taking, you know, we're not taking any land. We are taking an easement, which gives us a right, but it doesn't deprive anybody of the use of the, of the property. And I think that, uh, for the money that we're talking about investing in Lorraine County ditches, I'd be the first one to recommend that we, we take a look at some reasonable accommodation on the loss of, loss of trees. I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I appreciate the information that you brought, Mr. Kowalski. So. Yes, sir? Okay, have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
You took the oath. Don't forget it.
Could you put that map back up?
Sure. You want this one with the, that's fine, we're there. Oh, that one?
That's good. Uh, my name is Mark Heinrich, I live in the Springfield Circle, uh, two-six-seven-seven-six Springfield Circle. I'm in the subdivision here, just north of, uh, where you guys wanted to put this ditch in.
Do you have one of, are, is your, is your lot one of those that backs into the ditch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I'd just like to say is, um, what we're most concerned about is safety, because we are, as you well know, the houses that are affected by the gun range, the active gun range, that's twenty-four-seven every day. Bullets flying, noise. So, if you take these trees out, what I'm concerned about is, everything goes north. His gun range goes, everything goes right towards our subdivision. So, I'm here on behalf of my entire subdivision. You take those trees out, now I have, not only do I, I don't, I lose my backstop. Is it, God forbid, there is a bullet, and this has happened, uh, a year and a half ago, my daughter was almost hit by a fifty-caliber round. So, yeah, I'm on the news, I've spoken many times to your office,
To me, yeah.
to you directly. This scares the hell out of me. And now I, I get this, and now they're gonna take the trees out. And not only do I, I, I worry about getting hit as it is with the trees, now I get to see this. These guys, this guy shoots directly at our house every day. Police departments, people just randomly, the, the range is wide open to everybody. There is no signing in, there is no training, there just whoever wants to go back there and shoot whatever the hell they want. Just in the fall, we had a helicopter over my house shooting machine guns. It is, you know, we're eating dinner on a, whatever night that was. I, I see a machine gun fire out of a helicopter, I couldn't believe it. So, not only that, so it's a nuisance, and I don't wanna, my heart goes out to the people on Mitchell Road and Osborne. It is terrible, it needs to be fixed. But my concern is, I'd just like to preserve the woods, because it, it's a safety concern. And not only that, it, it's noise. You take the woods out, we have no noise buffer or, you know, anything to catch a stray bullet. And there are thousands and thousands of rounds, I'm sure, every week that are fired there, I hear it every day. So, I'd just like to ask Pete if he, if, if was part of the problem, if you could put that retention pond or do something further west into this empty space here, Pete? I just wonder why it's there and not something over here, where you can catch all that water? And maybe move it along that drain tile there.
So, it's a, a three-dimensional engineering, uh, situation. I situated it where it would require the least amount of acreage, because frankly, it gets expensive to buy the land, clear the land, excavate the land. So, if it were shifted further west, it would be less efficient and would require more acreages. Instead of being three feet deep, it might be a foot and a half or two feet deep. So, you'd need potentially double the acreage. Uh, that, that's in my engineering judgment, uh, where a detention basin would be. But frankly, I do not, I did not recommend the detention basin.
I just wondered, if there's less forest, if there's, this is such a heavily forested area, and it's also our backstop, as I mentioned. Isn't this in here a lot less forested?
You're pointing to the fifty-five acres?
No, no, uh, right in here. You could put a retention pond there?
That'd be in maybe Mr. Vergasato's rear yard, which I think is, uh, oh, you're pointing to the Roth Farm. That, that's the area that you're pointing to. That's, that's mostly under cultivation there. To answer your question, no, I don't recommend the detention basin, and no, I would not recommend constructing it elsewhere. I did consider that, that's my job as an engineer. Once again, I came up with the most cost-effective location. Okay.
One of the things that those drawings won't show is the elevation, you know, and elevation is a factor in the depth and of the, of the retention pond and how it, how much horizontal space it takes. So, it's not just a matter of whether it's wooded or not, it's, it's the elevation of the whole neighborhood.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I have a question for you, Peter, and maybe some of the viewers that are watching this may be wondering this question, because he brought up the trees. If you did, if you did the additional cost of the one-point-seven million and you laid the new tile, do you still have to take down those trees?
Absolutely, and the law actually prescribes a wider easement in that case, up to eighty feet. Unfortunately, the, you either have a drainage improvement or you leave the trees the way they are. Uh, from the drainage point of view, the trees are part of the problem. They obstruct the access, they fall into the creek, they, uh, block, uh, you know, the roots block part of the flow, so forth. So, the answer is no.
You know, and it might, it might seem like a dumb question, but it's for the residents, so they understand the clearing of the trees and what it, what it means to the project. But then, we have the residents that are saying, these are what these trees mean to us, because it buffers our property from the gun range, allegedly.
Right. I understand that, and frankly, that's the reason the commissioners make these decisions. You have to weigh all the, all the, all the evidence, I think is how the law is written.
And I think that's probably why we looked for options.
Right, and my, my concern, Commissioner, is that not cleaning the ditch doesn't solve that problem. Unfortunately. It solves the drainage problem, but it doesn't solve the shooting range problem. That's under another jurisdiction and another, another focus, and we're trying to hook the two together. And I understand that, since you're not getting any relief on the whole, uh, on the whole shooting thing and, and the stray bullets and all the rest of it, that one last vestige of protection you have would be changed by the drainage ditch. I get that. But I think there's a better solution for that problem, and quite frankly, I made some notes. I, I don't know that that falls under our jurisdiction, but I, we're intimately aware of the people that it does.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get at. You know, they, they felt like they struck out at the sheriff, the engineer, prosecutors, and are we the last resort or is there other options?
Obviously, it's 'cause it's here.
Right.
And we appreciate that.
With this petition?
Oh, not the petition, I was gonna talk about the other, there's two issues at hand we're talking about.
Yeah. Just generally speaking, what, what the recourse is for the neighbors with this situation?
We talked, we talked at length a year ago, right? You guys have been very vocal, there's been conversations with the township. I mean, I'm fine in saying this, I mean, we've said this from day one, there, there's no regulations that the township can't impose, there's no regulations the county can't impose.
So, I guess I just wanna say to Pete and the commission, just, I'd like to know how many, I don't know until you get in there, Pete, do you know how many trees you're gonna take out, is it gonna be deforested? Well, I don't have the map up anymore.
Oh, no, that's-
Commissioners, you can look at those pictures, you might have them printed there, you see the size of the trees. I think Mr. Kowalski is correct, probably the biggest tree that's grown in there the last forty years, around four inches. Basically, we need to cut a swath of fifty to sixty feet wide, clear cut that contains the ditch, bank to bank, and, uh, an adequate area to both construct it, or, you know, dig it out, excavate it, and to maintain it in the future. So, it's, I'll tell you right now, it's a clear-cut swath. And like the other commissioner asked, uh, it's absolutely necessary for any type of drainage improvement. Personally, I would love to save a lot of trees, but it can't be done. In some cases, we've saved a few individual trees and it just causes a nightmare, even in mowing the property with the, the way the boom mowers have to be repositioned and everything. And then the tree eventually falls into the ditch, so. Uh, the county policy has been to, essentially, clear cut. And that's, uh, that would be my recommendation. I, I understand it is not what you would like to hear, but that's, once again, that's how we do- how we do drainage projects.
Uh, once again, my heart goes out to the people who live on Mitchell and Osborne. I know it's, it's terrible, I've seen it, and it's awful. And last question, Pete, and you can answer this, I can sit down, you can answer, but where will the access road be? If you could show us on the map there? Is there gonna be a road coming in from Mitchell Road? Need to bring vehicles in?
So, it's, it's not a road, it would be a, a path, it would be grass, uh, whether or not there's grass there today, so like, starting at Mitchell Road, there's grass in the yards. You get in the back partway, uh, the Vergasato's yard, some, some grass, but as I spoke to him earlier, we would need to start clear cutting there, all the way to the ditch that cuts across the back of the Roth Farm. And we'd be on the, uh, the bottom side, as you view it there, sir, or the southeast side. And it would connect up to the, um, the south side of the ditch that runs, uh, in your backyard. And in fact, uh, actually, the ditch runs all the way to, um, Glen Cove Circle.
Correct.
Is it Glen Cove, or, that's not Springfield, that's Glen Cove, right?
Yeah, further north, yeah.
Yeah.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes. Mr. Cunningham, I, I figured they mentioned your name enough, you were coming up.
I answered yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you were about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Cunningham, I'm a Columbia Township trustee, and I understand, I think we have two separate issues here, and I just wanna make it clear to the commissioners, that flooding's been going on a lot longer than what was done to that 55 acres in that, you know, what he's done there. And, you know, the trustees have, have limited power on what we can do to him, and he has, we've had EPA out there, Soil and Water, everybody, and there's nothing that we've been able to help them with yet. It is a nuisance, I mean, he does shoot a lot, I don't know if he shoots a lot, but he lets every, uh, police department in the area shoot there for free and, and buy some lunch. So, I mean, that, that's a separate issue as opposed to the flooding on Mitchell Road. Mitchell Road, uh, with the Smiths and that, that's been going on for years, a lot longer than what, uh, the gun range has done. And I just wanted to make the commissioners aware that I think it's two separate issues. And that's...
Thank you, Mark.
No problem.
Have you ever thought about a county-wide building department?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have.
Someone whispered that in my ear the other day. I won't say who.
You gotta convince the people down south.
I know, I know.
Actually, Trustee Cunningham, I had a question for you.
Sure.
When we were, when Dave and I were here, Commissioner Moore and I were here, and he had come, we had come to the idea of getting a price from Peter for the additional cost of the tile or the additional cost of the basin, uh, putting the basin in. Did the trustees down in your area have an opinion either way?
We're, you know, Peter's always been very upfront with us, and, you know, I respect his opinion, and his, his opinion was that what he was proposing was the best way to fix the problem. It, it's not gonna be a total fix for everything, I know that, you know, because it's going to end up Plum Creek, which overflows its banks on occasions, so, yeah, but I, you know, and what I, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I just know that, you know, I'm, I'm going by what Peter has done, and Peter's packed, past projects that he's done for the townships, they have been successful projects.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Uh, like, I think the issue at hand is whether we proceed to try and alleviate the, the flooding and avoid another season that we're just about finishing here, or whether we decide to defer while we do more, more research or more accommodation. Quite frankly, the perception I get, uh, is that the, there are other issues here that have better solutions than not cleaning the ditch. And so I would, I would propose, commissioners, that we, that I would make a motion to approve the project and proceed, and at the same time, work with...
First, let's close the hearing.
Of course.
Sorry, Kansas.
Excuse me.
Yes, sorry, the Kansas, yes.
Correct.
Now you know why we have lawyers at the meeting.
Teresa, alert me.
So, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there anybody else on the speed?
Okay. Now, we can move to...
Oui, ma'am. Any discussion? Commissioner Riddell?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I never did that. In the world I came from, we closed the meeting when the boss walked out of the room. So at any rate, the, uh, I, I see that, I, I have a great deal of empathy for the individuals that have a problem with the 55 acres and I, and the fact that it is, you know, may or may not have, you know, added to the problem, but the original problem that caused us to be here, and as, and as Mr. Roth indicated, has been around for a while, needs to be taken care of, and we're committed to spending, uh, our and your tax dollars on significantly remedying a lot of the flooding problems in, in the southern part of the county. God said all the water has to go north to Lake Erie. The question is, how's it gonna get there? And I think we need to help it get there without flooding people out, and, and I think we need to fix ditches because our rural communities are gonna continue to grow, and the housing allotment that's north of this one is not gonna be the last one. And I, and I think we need to pay attention to ditches before they get even worse and before they cost more money. So for that reason, and not, not to dispel any of the concerns that the individuals have expressed tonight about the project, but there are other remedies for those concerns besides not doing the project. And so I would, I would make a motion that we, that we approve the project and proceed and, and take measures to fully address some of the issues in a more appropriate way with other departments.
Discussion?
Um, yes, Ms. Attorney Prosecutor Peltz. Should, should it be worded to approve the base project at 998? That's...
Well, that's the question, is the motion, well...
I guess clarification of the motion.
There's the, there's two alternat, this is unique, we've, we've never really had this at a ditch petition where you have the, the project, and then you have these two alternates?
Well, what happened was, oh, he made the recommendation, and that's what...
We have his recommendation. He did investigative work, but he wasn't asking us to make a choice, he was just, and I suppose we do have to include in there that we proceed with the project recommended by the...
Original project that was presented.
The original project. Good catch, Commissioner.
And then we're gonna have the engineers proceed.
Correct. So then the motion would be to, uh, affirm the, or grant the project as presented, affirm the board's prior or former order, which was to proceed with the project survey and design. As presented. To be clear, excluding the alternates. Right?
Right. And that part has been done, right, Peter? The surveying and design?
Oh, I need to finalize the design, but I'll have it done within the 60 days.
Okay.
And, and letting the engineer go out with the project, that's part of that.
So I, I think he's gonna tell you what the rest, the next sentence in the motion will be.
But for Commissioner Hung's concerns, is a valid, valid concerns here, is the motion is to grant the project as presented, so without the alternatives, and the motion would be to affirm the board's prior or former order.
I still move.
Can we have a first and second?
We already had a first and second.
Yeah.
So just, you were just clarifying it.
We were just discussing.
Is there anything further?
Yeah. Well, Peter, I just wanted to thank you for all the work you did. I'm sure you helped too, Don, but all the work you did on, on this, we threw a lot at you and, and asked you to do a lot of extra stuff on this, so...
Very welcome.
Reporting and whatnot.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anything further?
Doesn't mean it's over. I'm just letting you guys know, they go it, so. They have, they have 30 days to appeal, correct? So, I don't want everybody that's here on Mitchell Road to think it's done yet, so...
I didn't want to be the bear of that, Commissioner Moore?
I'll be the bear of it.
So my, my, I guess my other question, since Commissioner Moore brought it up, if something does get appealed, does that hold up your survey and bidding?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that, if someone does appeal the board's decision to grant the project, the project is halted and stayed, so everything is paused.
And, and just for the public record, that I've said this over and over, we have allocated a lot of ARPA funds for these type of projects. We may have to revisit that process in the next couple of months, and may have to bring that back, or our general fund has lost revenue, and then still go back and revisit funding the sewer project. I'm gonna keep saying it, just so that people know, we're not taking it away from the projects that Don has, a whole list of ditches that we need to be working on, so. I'm gonna probably say it every meeting for the next two months. Because this is another example, this takes another two, three years, and we lose the million bucks, so. That's it for my discussion.
Anything further for the Commissioners?
Hold the book.
Commissioner Riddell?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes. Okay.
Uh...
We're gonna do, hold on.
No, we're done.
Yeah, we're done.
You proved it, everything, so we're done.
And we'll memorialize that in a resolution.
We've been at it for two hours, I'm sure Commissioner Hung left a quick break.
Do you want to recess for five minutes?
For five minutes? Because I don't think anybody wants to listen to 10 resolutions on refinancing bonds, that's 10 of them we did.
The rest of our meeting, I guarantee you, will not be as, as interesting as this one was.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you all for coming and supporting the process.
Thanks, man.
Thanks, man.